All right. I would like to call to order the March 5th Dover School Committee meeting at 6:30 at the Chicaring Library at 6:33. Would you like to open up with any community comments? Hearing none. Before we jump into the next agenda item, I just want to quickly mention something about Laura and her announcement about your departure at the end of the year. And this is not a thank you goodbye because we still have a few more months to go, but I do want to say thank you. It's been seven years. Everyone at this table has changed over the seven years, even Dawn, who was here before that. Everyone's had different positions on this side of the table, and you've always been on this side of the table. And it's been wonderful for me, who's been six years, it's been wonderful for a lot of us. Things change all the time in the school system, whether it's staffing changes, procedure changes, the building changes, and it's probably not an easy thing to continually have to adjust. And to be a good leader at the building is important, and we thank you. Wish you good luck in finishing your doctorate, wish you good luck in your next career moves. But I just want to bring that up now, and it's not a goodbye because we still have a couple more months to go, but I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. Wonderful to work with.
So with that, we will move on. We have our next agenda item is a presentation by Ms. Stephen.
Hi.
Hi.
So if I could just introduce, Priscilla is our literacy specialist at Chicaring, and she has a counterpart at Pine Hill, too, which is very exciting. They've been doing a lot of collaboration together, but we wanted to kind of show you how the literacy specialist position has evolved this year and all the work that Priscilla and Laura and the team have done in terms of supporting not only students with their reading and writing, but also really bringing to fruition the work of the RTI committee that had come together and looking at data and really making sure that we're meeting the needs of all students and moving them all forward. It's been a pleasure to get to know you, and thank you for presenting.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I'm just wondering if the projector is maybe not on.
Why are we getting it?
Okay. So I thought that I would start by giving a brief overview of my role, and then, as Beth said, share with you kind of my focus, which for this year has been around building up our multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS model, and then give you an idea for our vision for the future. So the literacy specialist role is really a combination of supporting students and supporting teachers. And my work with student centers around providing direct instruction to students who need additional literacy support using research-based interventions. And with the students that I see, I closely monitor their progress to adjust the interventions to meet their changing needs. And for these students, a huge part of supporting them is collaborating with their classroom teachers so that we're using a consistent approach. And then I support teachers by providing or seeking out professional development opportunities, helping with the planning or modeling instruction, and then leading grade level teams through the process of unpacking our literacy data. So I've been a part of a small group of educators on the WIN team that's been working on creating a more robust response to intervention, which is RTI or MTSS program at Chicaring. And the RTI or MTSS framework is really a structure for providing literacy support to students by identifying students who need an extra boost of instruction early and then intervening quickly. So like this quote says, it's really about creating a collective response when students need additional support. And within the students, within the system, all students receive high-quality English Language Arts instruction within the classroom, and that's considered tier one instruction. And then some students are provided with supplemental instruction using a research-based intervention. And I wanted to mention that although these tiers are sort of distinct in this visual, there's really a continuum of supports within each tier depending on students' needs. So this year, we rolled out WIN or What I Need blocks, which is a designated time for students to receive instruction that's focused on what they need, including those students that would benefit from an intervention. A key component across all of the tiers of an MTSS model is the use of assessment to guide instructional decisions. So our focus has been on really rolling out the screening, progress monitoring, and diagnostic assessments that are needed for a strong RTI program. And screening measures are really quick, reliable assessments that are given to all students. And when a student has difficulty on a literacy screener, it's sort of analogous to that check engine light going off in your car. So you don't necessarily know what the problem is or how to fix it, but it's a signal that we want to take a closer look at things. And then depending on kind of what warning light goes off, we have a set of diagnostic informal assessments that we can choose from to give to students, and these assessments allow us to determine whether in fact there is a skill deficit and in what area that deficit lies. So putting these assessments in place has helped us to strategically group students and then match them up to the instruction that they need. So this is just an example of how WIN groups might shake out. This might be a third grade classroom, and based on our assessment data, we may find that there are some students who are having difficulty reading lengthier multi-syllabic words, and so we decide to put them together in a group and use our multi-syllable word routine intervention, which shows students rules for breaking apart these longer words and reading them accurately. Then we may have a student who has a reduced rate of reading, or maybe another student who's not reading with appropriate phrasing. So both of these students have some reading disfluency, and we may address that by using Read Live, which is a computer-based fluency intervention. And then finally, we may have several students who are ready for enrichment, and so we could put these students together in a shared inquiry group that's focused on having deep conversation about more complex text. So this is a menu of the intervention programs that we have organized by the skill area targeted, and the interventions that are highlighted in yellow are actually new this year. So we've done a lot of work to develop a strong bank of research-based interventions that teachers are continuing to become familiar with, and we want to have enough options to meet the diverse needs of students, but also limit it to some degree so teachers have a strong knowledge and comfort level with the resources that we have. So on the next two slides, I have a couple of examples of some professional development that I've helped provide to teachers. So at the beginning of the year, the WIN team led workshops on assessment procedures. We really wanted teachers to understand why we're giving certain assessments, and we also wanted to develop consistent processes for administration and scoring. Then at grade level meetings, we used a data dialogue protocol which guided teachers through the process of viewing and analyzing student data. And then prior to launching our first round of WIN blocks, the WIN team and I broke teachers into small groups to explore a few of the interventions. And then after that, I did a lot of connecting with individual teachers or pairs of teachers to continue to look through the materials, or in some cases, to model the instruction. And then during an early release PD day, I led a workshop for K- to second grade teachers where we discussed the science behind how we learn to read and research these practices for instruction, which is especially critical for at-risk readers. We've also worked on strengthening our core instruction. So last summer, a special educator and I led a small group of kindergarten and first grade teachers in working to create really engaging phonological awareness kits that can be used whole group or small group in the classroom. This year, the kindergarten team and I have also been collaborating to revisit and revise their curriculum map for core instruction, just to make sure there's consistency across the classrooms. And then last summer and into this fall, all K- to three teachers were either trained or retrained in foundations to solidify that aspect of our tier one instruction. And this was also really important because one of our intervention options is a double dose of foundations. So in terms of next steps for next year, we're hoping to move to a shared WIN block across each grade level, and this would allow us to group students and use staff more efficiently. The idea is to really flood the WIN block with support staff so that if we have the four teachers at that grade level, the grade level EA, perhaps myself, math specialist, literacy EA, maybe special educators, supporting students at that time, we can have more small groups running, which would allow us to incorporate more enrichment groups and support students in other areas beyond reading. We're also looking to continually refine our practice with RTI by, you know, continuing to build teacher knowledge of the interventions and progress monitoring techniques. And some teachers have expressed an interest in using summer PE time to connect and share what they've learned about the interventions that they've used this year. And then we'll be looking to fill any gaps in our bank of intervention resources. So for example, we have a comprehension intervention that is working really well for our third and fourth grade readers, but it's not the best fit for some of our fifth grade readers. And I think something with more complex text would be a better match. And then in terms of our core instruction, we're collecting information right now from teachers about the strengths and weaknesses of our current scope and sequence and the instructional materials we have, and we plan to use this teacher feedback to guide our next steps in terms of identifying program options or professional development that will strengthen our core instruction. So for instance, we have foundations K- to three, but we haven't found a strong word study program for fourth and fifth grade, so that's a gap that we'd like to fill. And then my support for teachers would then shift to focus on whatever new initiatives or areas of need kind of emerge from that data collection. I think I went through that really fast, but if you have any questions?
Any questions?
Laura, I don't know if you have anything to add about watching this all unfold.
Right. It's been wonderful to see it unfold. The group of teachers that went through the training two summers ago for RTI really started working together to think about where we were as a school and where we wanted to go. And Priscilla really took the lead even before moving into the literacy specialist role in terms of guiding really healthy, deep conversations with that particular group and also other teachers. You visited the different grade level, common planning times, really listened in such a thoughtful way to what their needs were and what their what pairings were, and addressed those. So a lot of problem solving has gone on this year, but really hit the ground running with a good plan because you had done so much planning with the RTI group. Throughout the year, we've had, Deb and I have had weekly meetings with Priscilla and heard all of her research and really good ideas about the best, the best resources and how to get us all on the same page in terms of our instruction and our core literacy model. So it's been, it's been a really, really good experience for the school. I'm really pleased about that.
Can I say, thank you very much. That was really presented in a comprehensive but accessible way for those of us who don't live in this world. And it struck me as you were talking how critical this work is. It kind of underpins everything else that the student is learning if these interventions aren't done correctly and appropriately. And I also didn't realize intervention, then you're also speaking not just deficit, also enrichment, so it's all grouped in the same. So that's helpful. Intervention just is a link, as a word doesn't necessarily say that to me, so I don't know if that's something in the future that we think about, changing the verbiage, but... So these are kids who are general education and IEP who are accessing these programs?
So that, if you think about the tiers, that top tier, tier three is the very top, and that would be considered special education. But those students are in the classroom during the WIN block sometimes, and so then they may be participating in a small group. It just depends on how things work out when we have the data meeting.
Okay. So you're hitting all students with these interventions?
So the WIN block is addressing all students' needs, but then specific students who have been identified would be receiving an intervention.
Okay. Okay. I see.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
And some of that is more proactive, you know, like in the case of kindergartners who, you know, they haven't been exposed to a ton of core instruction, so it's less intervention-y and it's more of a proactive measure.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Priscilla, good question. I understand that, you know, meeting and writing are foundational to so much learning at elementary levels, and I wonder if you also have, in the vein of effective communication, is there explicit opportunity to practice speaking and listening skills with students? Would that be under your domain, or is it practiced elsewhere in the classroom? And I can say I read to my child's third grade class last week, and they were excellent listeners and raising hands, but I don't know what kind of effective, specific training they might have.
So speaking and listening do you fall within the broader like standards for ELA? But, you know, I think that's sort of kind of where we are with broadening our thought process around WINS, and if we can have some more groups, then it may be possible for us to have a small group that's more focused on those skills. You know, there's some teachers who would like to have a small group working on social skills, or, you know, actually, the shared inquiry is a nice avenue for discussion and working on some of the speaking and listening because the group has to listen to one another and then respond. So I do think there is room to incorporate that.
Thank you.
That's an interesting, really interesting point. And we talk about communication skills being so important. They get to middle school, and they suddenly have to speak in front of a group, and it's that time where they're very self-conscious, and it's very nerve-wracking and anxiety-provoking. So if they did more than that at a younger age, it would just normalize a lot more, so that would certainly be helpful as they progress through.
Yeah.
I think one of the things that's really special about what you guys have done here is that we're now really being much more deliberate about it. Instead of like leaving things to chance, some kids might be struggling, but they can get through, and we just kind of leave it to chance that they'll catch up. That's the traditional model. RTI is more about like formally assessing these kids, figuring out where they are and where their struggles are, and then being more deliberate in our interventions. And I think what's really awesome about it is that it does capture kids who have deficits but aren't necessarily going to need an IEP. But it would be helpful to them to have some of these challenges shored up. And in my experience, my previous experience, the elementary schools really did a deep dive into this kind of WIN block model, and I've talked with you guys about this before. It really, it had a huge impact on self-esteem and so many other things, but it also had a huge impact on the number of kids being referred for special education because a lot of times, if a kid is not reading, there's great pressure on families. I even remember as a kid, one kid in the neighborhood came over and was reading the bumper stickers on the cars, and I was like, wow, that kid can read. My kid can't read like that. Is there a problem? And I think there's a lot of anxiety for families with their kids about where their reading is, and sometimes I think it's just some kids read at different, they learn at a different pace. But when you get to fourth grade, there are some basic skills that really need to be there because it starts, the curriculum starts to depend more on the kid's ability to read. And I think this is more about kind of capturing those kids with struggles as early as possible, also supporting the other kids. And it's, it's not so stigmatizing that it's like, oh, that's the kid who has troubles because they can rotate these kids through. So even our, you know, best-equipped students might still struggle in something, and so they may be getting the interventions from time to time. And it's different than say a pull-out model where it's like, oh, there, that kid has to go for his special education services or special education services. So it's really, it's great practice. You guys are doing a nice job, really. And I haven't seen it as much as I would have liked, but I definitely have seen it in action, and I know it, I know it works from past experiences, so kudos to you.
And if I could just add one more thing, you were speaking from a student perspective, I think in terms of working with the teachers, you know, having attended some of your data team meetings and your common planning time meetings, I've been so impressed because Priscilla's resume is quite impressive with the repertoire of research-based and evidence-based practices, and you've done a really nice job of selecting those that are most applicable to this population of students and guiding teachers on how to use those without overwhelming them. But also, you know, I think that subtly, without realizing it, you're also calibrating instruction and instructional practices and expectations within grade levels. So you have teams of teachers working together this year between, you have a teacher going into someone else's classroom and getting to know those kids and providing interventions, and they're internalizing those strategies that they can then bring back to their tier one core instruction. And next year, that's going to be so much more powerful when you have the whole grade working together. So, you know, not only are you targeting the students who need the small group or the tier three interventions, but you're really bringing the teachers together on that core instruction, too. So thank you.
Is it possible to take a minute or two to think about, maybe, I'm sure you probably have, but, you know, sort of measurement and tracking, just to see sort of progress and impact over time?
Yep. So we have a shared data sheet that all staff can access, and this is really the way that we're looking at student data over the course of the year, but then we can save that information going into further years. And then for students who are identified as needing an intervention, we create an action plan for those students. So that action plan houses all of their assessment data and also some anecdotal notes. So when we have our data meetings, we can comment on things that we've noticed, and then that tracks progress over a longer period of time. So I think that'll be a great tool for us going into next year. We won't have to kind of start from the beginning. We're going to have all of that information going in, and it's been a nice tool for me just to see, okay, what percentage of students did we have that were lower on this measure in the beginning of the year, and then what percentage do we have at the mid-year mark? And our percentages did, you know, decrease in terms of kids who popped up on those screeners, which was really great to see that the work that we're putting in is paying off.
Great. Thank you.
Is that, that data then shared with parents? If so, how?
We haven't shared it out. We're mostly using it internally, and I think part of it is us getting used to the measures. Since the screening measures are new, I think it's important for us to sort of get used to how the data looks over time.
Yeah. I would say that that's something that over time, you can start to, to share that information even with the kids, so that they can see where...
Right. Because if you want parents to support, to help you, you know, outside of school, I can see that would be...
Totally agree. But I would say this is an evolution, and just, just getting over this threshold of having done this benchmark, benchmark testing and then reassessing the kids to see that in fact there's been progress in the areas that they had identified as problematic for kids, that's huge. And what happens is it becomes kind of a point of pride, I think, for the teachers. In my past experience, I noticed that they took a lot of pride in seeing, okay, this is a place that I know I can help this kid. And to see those kids make those strides was phenomenal. And then once the kids become engaged in it as well, and they know what they're working on, it's a, it's a really beautiful thing.
And we have used the action plans in conversations with parents because we can graph that particular student's data, so we have used those to show the parent group.
Okay. Interesting.
And I have a guess, too, you're trying to normalize the situation, too, where if a student is put in a group, it doesn't become a stigma for them. So knowing that they need, you know, a small dose of something for a short amount of time, and then they're back to, you know, just general education. And those who need the extensions, too, and the enrichment, too, you're just trying to naturalize the fact that groups are coming together for whatever reason for short amounts of time, and then we're moving on.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Priscilla.
Our next item on the agenda is transportation, and I believe it's just an update at this point?
Yes.
I know we have an action...
We actually took it off because the transportation contract will come publicly to your April joint meeting.
April joint meeting, okay.
Yeah. So we're still working with the bus company to finalize things, so they were okay with us with approving it in April to give us time to work out some of these things that we've been discussing, so we'll have that coming forward.
Next item on the agenda is a presentation.
I think before you do that, though, I'd like to just walk the committee through the two budget adjustments before you do the PowerPoint, so you're up to speed on the numbers in the PowerPoint. So you do have a sheet in front of you that is whole-punched, ready to go into your budget book. So if you put your attention towards the highlighted yellow, where you see presented March 5th, we are bringing forward two budget adjustments this evening that will impact your total budget. The first one, you'll notice that we, back in January, added a .5 math specialist. We did that with a thought process that that person was going to be shared between Pine Hill and here, the same person, and we were hoping there might be an internal person that might want to take that role on. As things have played out, that's not quite looking that way. So rather than having a position that we don't think we can effectively fill for next year, we're removing that from both elementary schools. So we're removing the .5 math specialist. That doesn't mean that there are not targeted funds that are going to be used for math intervention. It's just that we won't have a body here doing it. You already have a math interventionist that comes in and works with students. That will continue. So you're not losing anything. It's just we're not ready to pull that position together between the two buildings.
Priscilla, by the way, is an excellent example of an interventionist who's able to kind of reach teachers where they are, and this is, this is like a two-tiered skillset. It's one thing to have the knowledge about literacy or about mathematics. It's another thing to be able to communicate that, to really teach teachers and kids at the same time about these strategies. And so we, when we originally rolled this out, we thought we had the perfect person for that. We are hesitant to try and do it with two separate people. We just, we just don't, we just don't feel like that's a good idea right now.
But also at a .5, you're not going to get a high-quality person for a .5 either, so...
So would that be something we can sort of keep an eye on over time?
Oh, definitely is still on...
That should be back next year, frankly.
Exactly.
Okay.
We'll still be looking at that. It just wasn't in the cards, and we are afraid to not do it the right way.
Yeah.
So that's why it's coming up. The second one is, so we've talked about our kindergarten numbers, correct? So right now, we have 45 confirmed kindergartners. We have 59 identified, but it looks like, unless there's a whole busload of people with kindergartners moving to town, that we only need three sections. If you remember, we thought there was an educator who had requested a leave of absence, and so our plan was to not backfill that position, and that was going to allow us just to sort of keep all the positions in place. That has changed, and therefore, we are bringing forward tonight a reduction of one classroom section for next year.
And just if I remember correctly, the number to really support four sections is 66.
So you can, you can have 66 and stay within your guidelines for three.
Be in the lower end.
That's the higher end of your guidelines.
Right. You could be in the lower end of four at 66?
Um, that gets a little thin.
Okay.
Yeah. You almost need like, oh, it looks 68 or so to make, to go over that hurdle.
And remind me again, we have 49 confirmed?
We have 45 confirmed, but 59 identified.
Okay.
But we know that some of those hold back or go other places for kindergarten, but that's your kindergarten register, or intro night is March 16th?
March 19.
March 19, so... Can you tell us where it says that?
Where is that, the 45 confirmed? Is it not on?
So 54 is what we're using as the census.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. But the 45 is, you'll actually see that in the PowerPoint. That's the, that's the information as of today.
Okay.
54 was the census that we were using to run the projections.
The 45 that says sign on the data line?
Yeah.
Then even 54 puts us below the policy number.
Right. There was, we sort of... Right. There was, we sort of, I mean, our feeling was we were only going to have three kindergarten classes next year, but we thought we had a way to sort of work with that without doing a true reduction, um, because we would just leave that position unbridled. So, um, I also gave you an updated, um, enrollment, because no one won the prize and found the typo. So if you, back in your original book, you'll see there was a, a year that there was a class size of ten. So I updated it so that you could clearly see, um, what your.
Yeah.
Yeah, you see that?
Yeah.
It was actually within last year's too. I just happened, as I was studying these numbers more, um, it actually popped up.
Oh, here.
But I wanted you to be able to see.
Which one is that?
This one. On the old one. Yeah.
Here.
You have the new one now. Um, I wanted you to be able to see sort of what your last ten years of enrollment had been. And just so you know, that was, um, it's been sustained by anywhere from twenty-three sections to twenty-nine sections. So we have definitely, even over the ten years, had a lot of fluctuation in the number of sections that we've held here. But there's never an issue with adding or, or taking away. So we always do what we need, uh, to meet the needs of the current census. So I just want to make sure the committee is comfortable with that. Um, like I said, over the last ten years, you've had anywhere from twenty-three to twenty-nine sections. We're looking at twenty-four for next year.
So what, will that be per class?
For?
Kindergarten?
So kindergarten, well, we don't know exactly yet.
Right.
Because we don't know. So if, if you got all the way up to sixty-six, that would be twenty-two.
But we're not even close.
But we're not even close. So it's going to be somewhere below that. Forty, I know you're going to have more than forty-five. I mean, that's.
It's probably going to be in the upper fifties.
Okay.
It may be low sixties.
Right.
But we doubt that it's going to be sixty-eight, seventy. That would be a colossal jump.
Sixty's still twenty, uh, twenty a class, so.
Right, right.
So this is one of those times where it's almost, it would be, in my opinion, inappropriate for us to stay where we are, if we are in fact being responsible and working to, working collaboration with the town in terms of their demands. And I think we, we have worked hard, all of us, to make sure that the town knows we ask for the things that we need. And if we don't need something, we'll be sure to not ask for it. And that's how we've done our budgeting. Don's talks so much about, um, budgeting smart and not just asking for the same amount you asked for last year, because that's what you asked for last year and therefore you should ask for more this year. That's actually not budgeting smart. We're actually budgeting based on what we really need. And I, I, so I, I, uh, at the end of the day, I think in terms of the numbers, we really, this is the right thing to do. That said, if we did have that sudden influx, I don't think Dover is a place that would say, well, too bad.
If you recall back in fiscal year seventeen, post-budget, we added two teachers. So let's come see.
It's only March, I mean.
Right.
So a lot can change.
Right, yeah.
We just think at this time, as you go forward with this budget, this is where you should be. If we had that huge change, then we would have to address it.
Um, even if you, like sixty, if you, I gave you the sort of, um, in one of your other, probably back in, uh, January, the analysis where I break it out by class section. Right, we might have it fixed.
January.
If you, it was in your packet, right? So you can see where we ran kindergarten scenarios with three sections and four sections. Priscilla was in January's packet. Um, and so you can see sort of the different, the numbers. So we, we ran it with fifty-four, fifty-eight, sixty, and sixty-four, and what the numbers would look like.
So we're potentially going to be somewhere in our, sort of our low watermark of fiscal year sixteen, seventeen.
Right.
Which was, uh, four seventy-one. Right now, we're looking in that area.
Right, a four sixty is the year you had twenty-three.
Yeah.
Classes, yeah.
Today is the multimedia day.
It's the right section.
So what we're going to go through right now, uh, for those of you that aren't able to make the, uh, open warrant meeting on, uh, Monday, March sixteenth,
Yeah.
is a presentation that we're going to give to, um, anyone from the town that wants to attend, as well as the warrant committee, um, on our overall budget.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, the first idea, and this is, and I'll go through this. We've done this same format for the last couple of years. Dover School has shared the mission to inspire, challenge, and support all students as they discover and pursue their full potential. Uh, we'd like to remind everybody of our strategic plan. This has been in place for the last few years. Um, I always point out the particular, um, bottom part of the slide where there's five strategic objectives that are important to guiding our, our district. Being innovative teaching and learning environment, uh, health and well-being of our students and staff, partnership with our families and communities, safe and innovative facilities, and as always, keeping an eye, um, offering the highest quality education, uh, using efficient use of our resources. And we just actually talked about a great example of that just now. So as an overview for the budget, um, our fiscal year twenty-one budget is responsible and sustainable, and it supports sort of the following areas. Um, the mission set forth by our district in our, um, strategic plan, compliance with all state mandates, compliance with all school district policies, and obviously keeping a sharp eye on, um, uh, safe facilities and our assets, supported by our taxpayers. We want to keep an eye, sharp focus on our town's finances and also adhere to the guidelines provided by our, uh, town's warrant committee. There's two things that our budget does not take into account for our healthcare costs, which are covered in the overall town healthcare costs, as well as our revenues from chapter seventy, which is about, um, just a little south of nine hundred thousand dollars, and our circuit breaker reimbursement, which is estimated about one point one million dollars.
So I think, I think that's important because, for you don't know, for the town people. So that takes money, that's not taxpayer money.
Right.
Off your ten million dollar budget, right? So.
So we ask the town to fully fund our budget, and then this money goes back into the town. So as a reminder, there's really two components to our budget that we keep an eye on. Um, and that rolls up to the overall budget request. Uh, we have what would be considered, uh, the chickering budget, which is supporting the, um, everything that happens within the four walls and on our campus. Um, here, chickering, as well as, um, the out-of-district expenses, which is, uh, tuition and transportation. So you'll notice, and we'll touch on each one individually, but you'll notice the overall total request for fiscal year twenty-one represents a decrease of about two point three percent or two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So for the chickering component, um, we are estimating, uh, a range of between two hundred and sixty-six and, I'm sorry, four hundred and sixty-six and four hundred and seventy-five, uh, students. Uh, we are recommending to reduce one section based on the census for kindergarten. Um, we just went through this, but obviously the townspeople won't have that benefit in the weekend half. Uh, we have forty-five confirmed enrollees, uh, with a census number of about fifty-nine. Uh, so having three sections as opposed to what's been, uh, historically four, we can accommodate up to sixty-six students staying within our, um, policy in terms of, um, class sizes. Obviously, a big component of all budgeting is salaries. Uh, we are, um, in the process of finalizing and ratifying our, um, negotiations and contracts with our educators. And obviously, our transportation and other contracts are still in negotiation. So we have a placeholder or reserve of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars there. Uh, we have some staffing changes and, um, require, um, retirements that come into place that illustrate, um, three reductions, one for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, one for thirty-five thousand, and one for fifty-five thousand. So a couple of the sort of highlights for, um, the budget and the expenditure area, um, for some of our furniture replacements, as you know, um, our little ones can be quite tough on our, um, assets. Uh, we have an increase of five thousand dollar ask, um, a decrease around technology of ten thousand. Um, a decrease for our summer services based on IEPs for just over ten thousand. Our new social studies curriculum resulted in an increase of six thousand dollars. Our social emotional learning, um, evaluation tool is an increase of three thousand. We have a reduction in overtime for custodial staff. Um, we have an increase in our building maintenance reserve, as well as, um, a few other operating expenses that is a net increase of three thousand dollars. So taking all that into consideration with salaries and the asks, it's actually almost a perfect offset. Um, it's an increase of one thousand six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on our budget this year, based on last year, for point zero two percent change. For out-of-district, again, as a reminder, we'll go into that. It's primarily made up of tuition. I mean, this satisfies our federal mandates as well as transportation. Sorry?
There's, there's all that.
Yeah, um, so, um, in regards to out-of-district, um, support, we support all Dover residents, uh, that require the services from ages three to twenty-two. Um, the services that are available must be free and appropriate, uh, for public education in the least restrictive environment. Uh, we are currently estimating thirty-one students will be budgeted for out-of-district support. And as a reminder, um, circuit breaker tuition, uh, circuit breaker reimbursement of about one, just over a million dollars, one point one million dollars, um, is not accounted for in the budget. So the detailed makeup there, um, is again a nine percent, uh, decrease with a thirty-one, uh, placement. So that's a, I mean, a decrease of about two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. We've had three placements move out of district for a decrease of about three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, we've had three people graduate or age out of, um, their support of three to twenty-two years for three hundred and ten thousand dollar decrease. And then due to a lot of the work that we've put forth over the years and great effort by our district, we have, um, three placements that are staying within the district, uh, which is going to be a decrease of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Can I just make a minor adjustment? We say less than three, uh, three, because we're actually not identifying exact numbers.
Thank you.
Because it's such a small system.
Yep.
We'd rather just kind of generalize, that it's less than three.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and then we have, uh, net increases, uh, from change of previous placements to an increase of eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, and then we have eight out-of-district, uh, eight, about eight new out-of-district placements that are already in the fiscal year twenty budget, um, that needs to be counted for in the fiscal year twenty-one budget of an increase of five hundred and fif, uh, five hundred and seventeen thousand. We expect the transportation increase to be about twenty-five thousand dollars, um, based on some of the riderships and lengths of trips. Once again, we highlight the, uh, reminder on the circuit breaker reimbursement. And that is the makeup of our budget. So I present that, um, in front of whoever's there. And there is an opportunity for any comments or questions, uh, by the folks that are in attendance. Um, if there was any, um, capital requests, that would be another time that we would make that, um, apparent to everybody, but there's none this year.
No, there are.
Oh.
But the capital committee does all the capital requests.
Will, will we usually present that then?
No, not capital.
Oh, we've done it before.
Do the air conditioning, because it was such a big project. But on a normal basis, um, the chair of capital presents all the town capital requests.
Okay.
What about the roof or something like that? Would that?
Um, maybe.
Okay.
It all depends.
Okay.
Capital takes pretty much ownership over.
Really?
Everything. I think the detail of the study and such of the air conditioning was something they wanted school committee to present.
Okay.
Uh, I think that was a unique situation.
Okay, alright. I just remember Adrian, how can you do that?
Any questions?
This is a, um, when you think about this, it's a pretty incredible budget. I think we should, uh, go, first of all, we always do thank Don because she's, uh, very perceptive and thoughtful about how we, um, go about our budgeting. But also, I think we're starting to see some of the fruits of our labor. We're really trying hard to make sure that our decisions related to outside placements, et cetera, are really, um, thought through. It's not to say we didn't always, but we're being much more deliberate about it. And I think, um, we're starting to see that reflected in our budget. But I also think it's important to note, hugely important to note, that we were very fortunate this year in the way our out-of-district placements shook out. That does not happen every year. And we wouldn't want people to assume that we're going to come back every year with a giving back two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It just so happened to swing that way this year, and it can swing the exact opposite direction next year. That it can actually turn that fast, and it has. So, um, it's kind of a combination, but I, I, I know I feel very good about the budgeting that we've done actually the last three years. And I think responsible, and that's important, because when the times get tough and all of a sudden there's much greater scrutiny on every single dollar, if we had a two thousand eight all over again, it's important that we've built that relationship and demonstrated that we're responsible with the taxpayers' money. So.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to make a note to remind myself, um, you know, sort of how, like the swings that we can see in out-of-district and swings we can, we've seen in potential enrollment for kindergarten. Um, that is a fluid nature, just like all this budgeting process, year over year. It kind of needs to be looked at individually, at, on its own merit every single time. Um, and we've, um, you know, had times when we've had to make asks due to, um, changes in requirements for the population, um, and, or the students that we have. So we're going to remind them, um, in a way somehow appropriate to be like, you know, every year's different, and right now, this is the ask this year, but next year, doesn't mean it's a trend.
I think your slide on out-of-district, it's important to say that you, that shows the volatility.
Yeah.
You could, I mean, if you just said, oh, it was a decrease of two hundred and forty-two, you're not seeing the real picture if you don't see all the components of that.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that just shows that if we hadn't had one of those move-outs or the move-outs, then we wouldn't be in this situation. So, um, it's just the roll of the dice of what happens.
Well, that can still change between now and.
Oh, it can happen, it can happen at any time, so.
Right, it's true. The case is point two, um, all the new placements, as you know, are already places we have this year. So it all came into being after you guys did the budget last year.
Right, right.
Right, just like the retirements, I was going to say. We had post, uh, post-budget.
Post-budget retirements.
Retirements, that, that happens often.
Right.
And so then, we've already built our budget. We already asked for the money. So we're getting this money, but then all of a sudden we have these savings. This is why we sometimes have surpluses.
Right.
Because it's, it wasn't expected. You just can't, you know, you can't bank on everything. And you, likewise, especially, well, actually at any level, you can have classes that are very needy, for whatever reason, a grade. Sometimes that happens. They need more support for whatever reason. And we, we see that in the system in various places. It's just the way it is.
Which reminds me, actually, we've talked about this a few years ago. We had a, um, teacher, um, reduction that, we, we do have the class size policy, but we also want to be cognizant of the makeup of the class as well. And so the number of sections.
It's not strictly about the number. That's true. That's a good point.
Let's make sure that we're keeping that on our radar.
Yeah, although with kindergartners, it's hard to know.
Good point, yes.
We hope it'll be very good.
That's true, that's true.
And in kindergarten, at least, we provide the safety net of, um, every class has a, it needs.
Yeah.
So in terms of the vote, um, if things were to change between now and town meeting.
We won't change.
We would just update.
We won't change. This will be your budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion to accept the budget as presented, um, in our packet and by Don? Rachel, second? Leslie, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, an update on our fiscal year twenty financial report.
Right, so you have, um, your report as of February twenty-eighth. There really hasn't been any changes since the last time we met in January. So I've just rolled the numbers forward, but all the, um, variances have remained the same. You're able to, um, this will all play out. Obviously, you see your salary positive variance, right? That's where we talked about the a hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, in post-budget changes. There's obviously some money in there that's still going to be spent. And if you look at your negative in out-of-district, those are those cases that we were talking about, that we've brought on, um, during this year, which is causing, um, the negative variance. But all in all, uh, your operating budget most likely will cover, um, everything, and that leaves the whole circuit breaker to go back, um, to the town, which is typically, uh, sometimes what happens to us. Although there was a year where we used about four hundred thousand dollars of the circuit breaker. So that's, the, again, the volatility that you can. So that's the, again, the volatility that you can potentially see. But that's why the town also decides to budget 100% for your out of district because your circuit breaker sort of is your safety net.
Okay.
You also have your quarterly statement of your special revenue and revolving funds. This will come into play a little bit, I think, when we talk about the playground. So we should connect on that. But it sort of shows you the funds that you have available to potentially put towards that project.
Next item. Mistale, on the principals' report.
We have made significant strides this year in terms of adopting responsive classroom. And we had that four-day training the end of the last school year. And all of our teachers who took that training have really embraced it from people who are newer in their career to veteran teachers, which has been wonderful. So we have started doing some of those classroom exercises with ourselves as adults. And it's, it's a lot of fun. And it's amazing how a very simple exercise can really bring people together and break down some barriers. So, so we've started doing that at some of our staff meetings. We are also figuring out who will be taking the next course, which is already lined up, thank you, for June. We have some educators who are taking it through another district during the school year. But we've just made significant strides and seen the impact it's made in the classroom across the school. It's just been tremendous to see. So I thank you all for supporting that. I shared out with you in my reports, the community events, some of which have been longstanding traditions and many of which have been added, all generated by staff. We've had significant support for community events from the PTO over the years and continue to have that. And it's nice to also have this coming from the staff members. So our next big event is coming up March 13th. Bingo. And we've invited the council on aging members to, to join us for that, either as participants to facilitate or just, just to sit with us and enjoy it. That'll be a lot of fun.
Team them up. That would be quite entertaining.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a lot of fun. In terms of budget, we are very appreciative of the rich resources that we have that allow us to have a lot of professional development to reinforce what we're doing in new programming, especially in terms of the RTI that you first about earlier and literacy. And we, we've talked, I feel, the last couple of years about the, the option for special educators to choose their own professional development independently. And the, the district has always just been very supportive of collective professional development as well. You heard this evening from Priscilla on our, our literacy changes and that's very exciting. The intervention word is something that's used in RTI, responsive intervention, which is a term that is used nationally. And I have heard from a number of people over the years that the word intervention doesn't suggest the, the full range of, of work that we can do with, with children. But that, that is a widely accepted term that, that we continue to use. It's also in part an extension of what we used to have in place with intervention blocks. It was the same idea. What is happening now is it's a systematic intervention. Our literacy specialist is, is providing the, the resources and really significant training and support. So it's, it's really moved that forward in a wonderful way. In terms of professional growth and the evaluation system that, that continues on, we're midway through the cycle. So we're having a lot of conferences with folks as we do throughout the year. It has been a significant help to have our special education leaders in the district take on the evaluation role for special educators. For quite a few years now, the principal and assistant principal at our elementary schools have been doing that for the entire staff. So it's been nice to, to share that this year. We announced that Cynthia Shapiro, our guidance counselor of many, many years, is retiring, which is very sad for us. She's had a tremendous impact over the years. And so we're just enjoying her while we still have her. And I, that, that covers most of the main points of my report. Do you have any questions?
Questions, comments?
I, I mean, I guess I have one. Do we plan on hiring or bridging with Cynthia Shapiro, I guess? Rather than hiring new next year, do we plan on hiring someone that could kind of overlap with her this year for the children for consistency sake, I guess?
Oh, I, we had not, but that's not something we would necessarily rule out usually. When you're hiring someone, they're on the same school year, so they're not going to be able to just walk away and come over for June. But typically with important roles like this, we'll find ways for them to spend some time together so that they can see how this person conducts themselves. Most of us can get away for a day or two. Like, for example, we had a assistant principal take over in a temporary role at Pine Hill and he shadowed the, the assistant principal who was going out for two or three days. It's not that unusual. So that we, we could definitely do and would probably do, Leslie. Longer periods, it's less likely, just because typically somebody's in a role. That's a good question, though, and it's an important piece.
And if there's an opportunity, either to make it work financially or through Cynthia to have an overlap even after someone's been hired, keep that in the back of your mind.
That's been done before, too.
Would you be looking for someone who's like, you know, more senior experienced person like she was? I know sometimes when teachers retire, we bring in a younger.
So, so times have changed since the days of elementary guidance counselors. And we're actually thinking that the position should be an adjustment counselor. Guidance counselor, to me, sort of smacks of kid needing help selecting their courses. And we're seeing an uptick in, in the reason we have an SEL goal is kids with adjustment issues, anxiety. And we need, we, we believe we need somebody who's trained in those areas. Cynthia's handled those very well. She, I think, is a certified adjustment counselor. She, her title is guidance counselor, but we'll be looking for an adjustment counselor. An adjustment counselor usually has a little different background, like an MSW is typical, a lot more experience with the counseling, counseling piece. And, and quite honestly, just to become an MSW licensed social worker is a ton of work. It's like 800 hours internship. So whoever it is, is going to be experienced just by that alone. Yes. All of that plays in. Experience, personality, ability to interact with kids, ability to interact with kids who don't want to be interacted with.
Yeah.
Ability to educate parents carefully, diplomatically.
There is an adjustment counselor in the district, right?
Yes, we have them at the high school, middle school. And, but, but this is something that Kate could speak to better. But I know that Kate has felt very strongly that all of our counselors, at the, both of our counselors at the elementary level should be adjustment counselors. So, yeah, with any position, there's a certain amount of anxiety, but we're going to be okay.
Yeah. And we do take it into consideration the position when we decide. If you notice, the retirement reduction was only 35,000. So we look at each position when we make that determination about the savings that we're going to take in, just like we have a chemistry teacher at the high school. You can't, so we, that's, we have not budgeted for a.
Enteral.
A lower, a lower level inexperienced person.
Yeah.
But that said, it's a desirable position.
Right.
This is a really desirable position. These are, you know, a school has one adjustment counselor typically. And there are plenty of people doing the training for this.
Yeah.
So the pool will be deep, I would imagine.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
It's a loss, for sure.
It is a loss, no doubt about it. With, with the departure of anyone who's been here as long as she has, you lose, you lose a little bit of the culture of your school. And as I always say to people when we have changes, there is a, there's a bit of grieving that goes along with it, but we should always think about the positives that may come from it as well.
And congratulations to her for retiring.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions for Mistale? Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
The next item, at least for reports, and then I'm going to ask Dr. Kio that, something that's already in your packet, but it's not on the agenda, is the warrants that were assigned for.
Since your last meeting.
Since our last meeting, thank you. So January and February. Any questions? Leslie can speak very. Leslie knows them well. So thank you for that. I asked Dr. Kio, and there is an update in your packet. It's actually up from where we just were. Go over your planned expectation for search for principal.
Right. So I would echo your sentiments, Henry, in that Laura has, has left her mark on this school system and that's, that will never go away. A principal's impact on a school can never really be fully measured. But we know that she has brought forth a great deal of positive change and, and we wish her the very best. The, yes, so anytime we, we go through a, a search of this nature, we want to be sure that, you know, that we do it right and that we're thoughtful about it. We do intend to have a, a principal search advisory committee. Typically, what we've done, except in the case of central office positions, I've had Beth run the search and I come in towards the end as we start to look at finalists. I want this to be a meaningful experience for the people who participate, but at the same time, I want to reserve the, the final decision. And, but that is not to say that I do not monitor it. So I've already, I mean, I will be looking, I'm thinking of the assistant headmaster. I've already read through all of the applicants for that position, which is a similar process with a search committee. I will do the same thing on this one, which actually was posted today. And so we'll, we'll, he will go through the, the period of posting. And then on the March 20th, you'll, you can see on there, the application materials are due. And then the advisory committee meets to discuss the applications and kind of credential review process, identify candidates to interview and develop questions, a writing prompt. You know, I'm sure by now that Mistale is an excellent writer. It's an important part of the job. And so we, at least in more recent years, I don't know if you did a, a writing prompt, Laura, but I know for some of our other administrative positions, we are now definitely asking people to give us a, a quick writing sample. So all of that will take place on the 24th. Then on the 30th and 31st, we would have our candidates into interview and the committee would recommend finalists to meet. Finalists would then visit the district and interview with the key stakeholders and school committee members. We would, then the goal would be for mid, probably mid-April, I would make a recommendation to you for, I guess it's the 16th, I think, is the meeting for Dover?
We don't have one in April, it's May.
Oh, this, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Unless you piggyback on one of the joint meetings.
Yeah, well, I mean, it.
Oh, no, you wouldn't be running, so it's.
Right.
It's May 15th is our next one. No, May 5th is the joint one.
Okay.
Right, that just got changed, right. So you see that the makeup, I skipped down to the, the steps we'll follow. The makeup we are looking at would be four professional staff members, two parents or guardians. We would envision one coming from advisory because advise, uh, Laura's school advisory has really served in a sort of a governance role. And also one from, with PTO's kind of input. And then two members of the leadership team. I think this is important because the leadership team is on the same page right now with the direction of the district, really all three districts. We have a lot of regular communication and we've spent so much time talking about these things that I think that their perceptions would be really, really important. So we haven't identified who these people are yet. And then two school committee members. I am wondering if there's anything I missed. So do you guys have questions about this?
When does this committee officially form?
It officially forms, well, the first meeting of it would be March 24th. So there'd be a process of reaching out to people, probably that Beth would do with some help from her assistant or mine. So, I mean, the school committee should be thinking, I mean, it's, it would be helpful for me, for us to know. Pretty soon, if you're not meeting, again, that can be done through Henry, but there may be people clamoring to do it, I, I don't know. We would need two people who can give us some time.
Okay, well, reach out to me, I will reach out to you, I have a couple of thoughts.
Okay, perfect. Yes, so the meetings, the, the work is done between 3:00 and 7:00 on the selected dates, basically.
Okay.
All right. And then I, I also wanted to give you an update on the coronavirus and where we are with that. The credit being given to our families because they really have kind of self-regulated and controlled themselves. People are panicking in various places throughout the world. I haven't sensed that hysteria here. I don't know if Laura's seen any of it, but I think our families have been, you know, watching. This is an educated group of people. They can read, they are kind of assessing for themselves the risk. I think what we, what we have determined is that ultimately as a system, and I work very closely with Jill Fedora, the lead nurse, and really kind of the medical professional that's in touch with the outside organizations, that the best thing for us to do is in fact adhere to the wisdom and advice of CDC, the Center for Disease Control, and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health on kind of protocols, when to be worried, what to do if somebody's displaying symptoms, what to do if you've heard of a family has been in Italy or China and has now come here. They give us the guidance. You can see all of that guidance. It was in the letter that I sent home to families through that link to CDC. So we are working with them. We are working both, with both boards of health, Dover and Sherburne. That's not always easy because to get everyone coordinated can be challenging and to get everyone kind of pulling in the same direction, although they are very talented people on both sides. And so, in fact, we have a meeting tomorrow to discuss kind of our protocols moving forward.
You with the board of health?
With the board of health and Jill and the visiting, the visiting nurses association. Believe it or not, the VNA from, she's from Walpole, is our conduit to mass Department of Public Health. So you remember a few years ago, was it last year, the, the norovirus? And our kids had been in the Galapagos Islands and got stopped at the airport. That was Deep PH who got involved instantly because they got the reports. So the Department of Public Health got involved instantly and coordinated through her to us. So she's an important person in this and so she will be there tomorrow as well. We are, let's see, kind of our, our steps in response to all this, and remember, it's, it's still, Massachusetts is still very safe in comparison. it's still, Massachusetts is still very safe in comparison. The illness itself is, there's, you, as I said, you guys have read as much as I have, there, I'm, from the things that I read and try to ascertain, kind of source, synthesize, it sounds to me as if this is something that is particularly threatening, if you want to say that, to our most vulnerable populations, particularly our elderly. And frequently, they say kids have it, don't even know they have it, and they may even be carrying it, and they never show symptoms. So it's, it's, it is in that way like the flu, in that it is contagious, we can give it to each other, therefore we need to be really, really smart about how we sanitize our buildings and wash our hands, teach our kids about washing hands. Our parents need to be really smart about that as well, spend a lot of time on it. But it, it is, from what I can tell, going to come here. To Dover and Sherburne, I don't know, but to Massachusetts in a bigger way, I think so. I think that that's what they're predicting. I've read a lot of different numbers, and I don't want to start quoting those, because who knows what the truth is? I think somewhere in there it lies, but I do think that there will be a greater spread of coronavirus. I think that the, the testing for coronavirus, it's an interesting process now. If you're showing flulike symptoms, that doesn't mean you would necessarily be tested, which I think has a lot of people scratching their heads. I don't work for CDC, I don't, I don't know what the rationale is. I do know that if you have come from one of those level three countries, Italy, Iran, China, and are showing symptoms, you will get tested. But if you haven't, and you don't, you can't think of anyone you know of who has, they may just assume it's a cold or the flu. So that suggests to me that it's not going to be exact science somehow. We will obviously continue to, to monitor this closely. We are planning to send something out again, although you're cautious on that, because I think you can send too much information out. I mean, again, this is a population that, that follows the news. Right now, the news hasn't really changed. The news is be smart about staying clean, using hand sanitizers, clean your buildings, which we do. We have always cleaned our buildings during flu season. We have some great equipment that we purchased last year during the norovirus, that's an ionizer spray. It's like a gun that sprays your stuff and sticks to it to, to sanitize whatever surface you're spraying. We need more of those, but we have enough to, to effectively serve our purposes, and we're lucky to have them, because they're in high demand. We are suggesting to families that if in fact their child is showing symptoms, they need to call the doctor, not just go, or not go to the hospital. That is something that hasn't really been emphasized a lot, I don't think. At least, I haven't heard it that much, but that is the best practice. So we're encouraging people to do that. And we're also saying to people, staff and children or families, this is not the time to go for employee of the month by not, by going to work when you're not feeling well. We would prefer people not send their children to school if they're not feeling well. This is not the time for people to load their kids up with Advil, because he has a, he or she has a slight fever, and they can get through the day. Believe it or not, Jill was telling me she's seen that on occasion, where all of a sudden at the end of the day, the kid's fever shoots up because they had Advil. And we know people are busy, but this is not the time for us to do that, because it's such a contagious illness. So that's, that's really where we are, and I just wanted to make sure you knew that, people at home watching know that. And again, we're just going to keep a close eye on it and continue to be vigilant.
Are there preparations or conversations about remote learning? Should that be necessary?
Yep.
Because I know that a district's part in the process of that.
Yes.
And how feasible is that? I don't even know.
Well, I mean, we do remote learning at the high school through virtual high schools, so it is feasible, but we are not equipped to run virtual high school classes ourselves, all day for every subject. And it might be even more complicated at the elementary level. I have been having conversations with Beth about it. The one thing that we think is...
Is not a virtual elementary?
There isn't a virtual elementary. And virtual, virtual recess, virtual...
Virtual kindergarten would be entertaining.
...money. No, we, no, so that might be, you know, if we had to close the schools, I think there'd be a major disruption. But I said again, that we'll be looking to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, these, for their direction as well, because we won't be alone.
No, exactly.
I mean, after all, when, when, you know...
It doesn't step at the border.
Yeah, it doesn't stop at the border, and we don't know where it's going to pop up. I have heard of, of schools in the area that have closed. The one thing that's tricky about all this information coming at people differently is that frankly, superintendents are responding differently, and that can complicate things.
Well, it's people's own, like, personal level of panic or not, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's really, really true. So my advice to the, the leadership team was that we are the calming force in the storm. And this is a small storm, could get bigger, but we need to be calm and not respond hysterically, which is why I don't necessarily want to send out a, a letter every day with an update. The information, if it's not changing, I'm not sending, I'm not sending information out. So, but at the same time, we, you know, we don't all deal with things the exact same way. We don't all have the same reaction. Some people truly react with great fear about something like this, and we respect that.
You should see my basement, my husband is a, he has like 50...
I mean, know where to go.
I can feed the whole town, we got pasta and medicine and cases of water. I'm like, what, what is going on? Every time I come home, there's a big Amazon, and I'm like...
So that's a good case in point, you guys don't react to it the same way. And that's, that's actually just like our whole population. So we've had some very panicky people, but very few, really.
Tripoli, yeah.
The tripoli, yeah.
I just think one of the questions that I've heard is, you know, what would it take to close the school, and who does that?
So we don't do that, again, I wouldn't do that on my own. If, if we felt as if enough of our kids, if we knew some of our kids or our teachers were in fact infected with coronavirus, we would go to the Board of Health, and the Board of Health would give us our guidance. The Department of Public...
The town board of health.
The town, the town, the town boards of health can actually make that determination. So recently, you heard in Newton, there was quite a, a kind of a debate, because they said some kids had come back from vacation and been in Italy, and they made the determination there locally, that those kids should not come to school. But the guidance from CDC at that time was that they did not have to be quarantined unless they were showing symptoms. So they made the determination in Newton that it didn't matter if they were showing symptoms, they still didn't want them to come to school. That became a big debate. But my understanding, and I think it's correct, is that the Department, I mean, the Board of Health can make that determination. So the, I guess if it, if it's at all helpful, I mean, we're not making those decisions by ourselves, which I think is the right approach. And this is why that meeting tomorrow is so important. And the thing that I'm trying to tell people and parents is, we will address things as they come at us, as thoughtfully as we can. We're not, we are not, this is a pretty capable team of leaders here. Our school committees are capable people, our, our health people are very capable, the boards of health are excellent. So I feel like we're, we're handling it correctly, but, you know, it's a very fluid situation. Right? It could change, yeah, yes, it could change anytime.
We know where we're going if it does.
Well, thank you. Any other questions? Keep us informed, Leslie, if you need anything from us, we're here for you. I know you're always here for us, so let us know. Next agenda item has to do with school choice, and whether or not, this is an annual discussion, and it just happens a year again. So before we sort of follow and potentially take a motion, would you just give a quick update on sort of what school choice is? Some of us have been through this a few times, and a refresher is always helpful, and then sometimes this is a first time for others.
Absolutely. So you, you saw in your packets, kind of the basic language about Mass General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12, requires local school committees to vote annually as to whether or not they want to participate in school choice. Our school committees have historically voted not to, and there are a number of reasons why. Probably most importantly, Dover Sherburne as a top, top-tier system in the state could draw potentially many, many...
So school choice is?
School choice is, people have the option to come to your school system if you participate in school choice, and the state gives you $5,000 for each kid who comes. Once they come, they stay. And $5,000 a year, as you know from your budgets, is not going to cover the cost to educate a student in a typical year. It's more like 18 to 20. So it's not financially wise. It's also, given our enrollments and the fluctuation in our enrollments, it could be a real problem. We could accept 10 students to grade four, and the numbers could bubble up, and now we have to add another section, and 5,000 is not going to pay for it, or 10,000 or 15 from the three kids. So it's just something that the, the district has opted out of, and there's a, there's language there for the, for a motion.
So there'll be an opportunity for discussion, but I would like to know, do I have a motion to move the Dover public schools not participating in the school choice program for the 2020, 2021 school year? Mark, second? Leslie, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Any others?
Okay.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is, let me just get back up to, for our information, it's the consent agenda from our minutes from the Dover School Committee meeting on January 21st, as well as a donation, which I thank for, I just want to get down to it in the packet, so, oh, thank you. Donation from the O'Reilly family, past parent of Christina O'Reilly, for $25, so we appreciate them, and now this donation, so thank you very much. So there is no action other than just the consent agenda. You also have, for communication purposes, minutes from the Regional School Committee meeting on January 7th. Oh, we do, I'm sorry, I thought it, my AR is in the wrong spot. So do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented in our packet? Rachel, second? Leslie, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. No opposed? None. I would, any other business, any other comments, questions? Thank you. Before we adjourn, I'd like to enter into executive session with respect to update on contract negotiations and personnel discussion not to return to open session. Need to poll with a, a audible, yes. Leslie?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Brooke, Henry?
Thank you.